All right, Madam Chair, we are live and it's back to you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome back to the Washington County Board of Commissioners Afternoon Session. This is Chair Catherine Harrington. And with us are Commissioners Pam Treese, Roy Rogers, and soon to be joining us on camera Vice Chair Jerry Willey. Commissioner Niffisafi is excused. So we have one more item on today's work session before we convene in an executive session. This item that we have is to consider expanded recycling collection services. And towards that end, I'd like to turn it over to Mira Semantel, our interim Director of Health and Human Services, and Mr. Thomas Eggleston, our Solid Waste and Recycling Manager. And as always, we have County Council Tom Carr and his very able team at our disposal to help us with any legal questions that we may have along the way. So take it away, staff.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington. Well, good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. My name is Mira Semantel. I am the interim Director for Health and Human Services. And I'm pleased to be here with you this afternoon and to introduce Tom Eggleston, our Solid Waste and Recycling Manager, who will be providing you with several policy options and considerations regarding expanded recycling collection services in unincorporated Washington County. I also know there were some questions that might have come up at the end of your business meeting during a public comment. And Tom will also be able to address any questions about our garbage and recycling advisory committee quorum and voting that occurred. So with that, I will turn it over to Tom, who can take you through today's presentation.
Thank you, Mira. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington, Commissioners. Happy to be with you here this afternoon to talk about expanded recycling collection services. Before we get started, I just wanted to clarify a little bit about the garbage and recycling advisory committee vote. We were working closely with County Council on the process throughout the process of the review for the exemption requests made by Ridwell. And the vote was made by six members of the advisory committee and the bylaws require any five members to be a quorum. So we're pretty confident that it was a sound process and the committee did what they were legally charged with and required to do. So we feel very confident in that process. We're happy to answer any questions about the advisory committee's consideration and the process through this topic. Otherwise, I'll go ahead and get started on the presentation about expanded recycling collection services. If you can go to the next slide, please, Kevin. Thank you. So the policy question before us today, before you all today, is does your board wish to direct a policy approach to expanding recycling collection to include items not accepted in the standard recycling program in Washington County? All right, next slide, please. So I'd like to start this conversation off with a little bit of framing about this topic. Recently, in the last five years, the Department of Environmental Quality has been our thought leader in the state and the region on materials management programs. And we've adopted this framework called Sustainable Materials Management. I think it's important framework to consider in the light of this conversation. Sustainable Materials Management really recognizes that there should be a shift in focus towards including consumption, reuse, material use, product design, and manufacturing, and not just a focus on end-of-life management. End-of-life management is important. DQ recognizes the importance of recycling and end-of-life management. However, also emphasizes the real environmental bang for a buck in addressing more upstream impacts on materials. For example, if you're looking at a domestic greenhouse gas emissions from a materials management perspective, which DQ has adopted in their land use division, 39% of the domestic greenhouse gas emissions take place before a product even reaches our households. 39%. 2% takes place after we dispose of that product or decide how we dispose of it. So if we're really looking at this from a holistic greenhouse gas perspective, we want to look at those upstream impacts and think about our material use and consumption and not just how we treat it at the end of life. Again, I think it's important to notice that end-of-life management is important, but it's not the end-all goal. And another part that I think is really important here, the DQ has noted in their research, is Oregon has abundant disposal capacity. We have modern, less polluting landfills, strong recycling programs in our state. Zero waste to landfill is not a primary objective of sustainable materials management. It's a great aspirational goal, but we should not be pursuing policies and objectives that divert materials at all costs. It's important to recognize the value of all disposal treatments in our programs. So I just wanted to highlight that. And this is a shift in framework and paradigm, and we understand that. And it's going to take a while for us to adjust our programs and our communities and really focus on this paradigm. Metro's 2030 Regional Waste Plan has started to adopt new regional indicators that can help us shift our focus as we track metrics. Those indicators are looking at things like greenhouse gas emissions, which is our ultimate goal in environmental programs of recycling, reducing greenhouse gas emissions, looking at how much tons we generate on a per capita basis in our region. So we can reduce the amount of waste that we generate per person. Looking at how many, what parts of our community have access to adequate services and adequate programs? Are we treating our multifamily community members similarly to how we treat our single-family community members? And finally, looking at the amount of contamination in the recycling system. These are different ways to look at the metrics that we're tracking as a region, and they're really important to frame the conversation on. Next slide, please. So let's talk about recycling and what's in the recycling system and why. Recycling in our code and in terms means it's any process by which solid waste materials are transformed into new products in a manner that the original products lose their identity. The great example here is a plastic bottle gets shredded, turns into flakes of plastic, gets sent to a plastic manufacturer, reuses that raw material to create new plastic bottles. It changes the material, it changes the makeup. It does not retain its original identity. And then why are only certain materials included in the curbside recycling mixed program? The region has a consistent list of materials that are included in our curbside recycling program. We work closely with our regional partners at Metro and local governments across the region and the state to really think about things like, does this material have a strong end market? Are we sure we can keep it in our recycling system once we put it in there? Can this material be separated from other materials? Do we have the technology at our recycling facilities to separate and sort these materials out? Does it impact our sorting equipment? The classic example here is plastic bags and the wheels at the recycling facilities getting dumbed up with plastic bags or string lights. Those types of things cannot go into our sorting equipment. Does it make environmental sense? Sometimes it doesn't make sense to recycle something. We're not sure about the end markets, the treatments. There's a new chemical recycling technologies that are out there that turn plastics into fuels and other material inputs. And there's a lot of work happening across the country to really understand the environmental impact of these processes. Is there enough material to sort for? Do we have enough material in our recycling that we can actually sort for this material and create loads that can be accepted by markets? And then also, what's really important is the ability for generators to identify and prepare these materials properly. We want to make sure that materials are clear, easily identifiable, and can be sorted out by generators. So some examples here, things that are in our mixed recycling. We think of paper, cardboard, plastic bottles, plastic buckets, plastic tubs, metal, those kinds of plastic things. And then some of the things that are recyclable that are not in our program, so we'll talk more about, plastic film, styrofoam, plastic clamshells, and plastic lids. Next slide, please. Zooming in a little bit more, an overview of our waste stream here in Washington County is unincorporated Washington County snapshot. We have three main lines of service that are solid waste system provide services to the residential sector, which is households, single family to fourplex, commercial sector, which includes multifamily households and businesses, and then drop box, which is large boxes that are for garage cleanouts or construction projects. 66% of the waste we collect is from the residential sector in unincorporated Washington County. Of that, 56% of it is garbage, 23% recycling, and 21% yard debris. You kind of see the breakdown on the slide. If we want to break out the expanded recycling categories that are potentially can be collected, we look at plastic film as one that comes up a lot. Plastic film is 1.4% of our residential garbage. Textiles make up about 3.6% of our residential garbage, batteries 0.1%, light bulbs 0.01%, number one, plastic clamshells 0.14%, and block foam 0.18%. So total, we're looking at about 5.5% of the residential garbage stream for these expanded categories. I also highlighted food here because food is a big chunk of our waste stream, and it's one of the next things we're working on regionally to identify opportunities to divert. And food makes up 27% of our residential garbage. So it's a big material. It's an important material. Next slide, please. So looking closer at these expanded recycling categories and what are the current options? And another review of those highlighted waste stream, the portion of the waste stream, excuse me. Plastic bags and film. The current options are drop off at grocery or recycling depots. Most grocery stores have film collection at their front doors. Batteries, Metro has household hazardous waste programs, and then we have opportunities like Batteries Plus and Home Depot that are collecting batteries for community members. Light bulbs, similar to batteries, Metro and depots such as Batteries and Bulbs Plus and Home Depot. Plastic clamshells is a category we had materials markets for from depot perspectives before the situation overseas where China tried to clean up their recycling incoming. So there's limited opportunities right now for clamshells at depots. Styrofoam, we have Agilix, which is a local company here in Tigerhead that accepts styrofoam at a drop-off facility. Textiles, reuse and donation are the primary outlet for those. And then food is another highlight there. There's no outlets. There has been some questions about markets for some of these materials, and we have done some research on potential markets available for these materials. We are, I've been working closely with Far West Recycling, which is one of the premier recyclers here in the region. And they do have identified markets for most all of these materials. Plastic films, for example, Trex decking in Nevada is an outlet that is commonly used by depots. They do accept it. They would accept it in larger quantities. It has to be very dry material. It's kind of one of their standards. Batteries, there's an outlet, Universal Recycling Technologies is a recycler in Clackamas County that works with the Oregon E-Cycles Program is a battery outlet. Light bulbs, also Universal Recycling Technologies. Number one, plastic clamshells, there's one market in the South of the United States in Texas called Green Impact Recycling. And they are a new market. They're an emerging market, and our MRFs are recovery facilities are testing loads and sending them there to identify tolerances for contamination and things like that. And then textiles. Textiles is a tricky one. Reuse and donation is more of a community-facing market outlet. But there is a downcycling company that makes rags and cloths out of textiles. And that is the market that the recycling system has identified as a potential one there. Next slide, please. So we want to talk about different regulatory approaches that your board could direct staff to pursue in regards to expanded recycling collection. Staff really have identified three approaches that are, there's examples of in different parts of the region and parts of the country. Option A, or I say Approach A, is a new recycling collection program. And that would be a program implemented by certificate holders through the existing authority that the county has to implement the solid waste collection system. That would require rule changes and rate changes, but it would not be a change to county code. It would be the current pathway to collect new materials through our regulated franchise solid waste collection system. I'll elaborate a little bit more on each of these approaches as well. Approach B could be a limited recycling or registration. It'd be an open market approach, and it would require code and rule changes. And another approach would be an exemption approach, which is another open market approach that would require code changes. And you can kind of see the bar. There's kind of a highly fully regulated to lightly regulated on a spectrum. So next slide, please. Elaborating a little bit on Approach A, this approach would be involve amending administrative rules to require current service providers or certificate holders or their subcontractors to collect additional recyclable materials that are not currently accepted in the curbside recycling program. Some considerations, county would set the rates for this program. All community members with access would pay the same rates. County would determine who receives the program and where it's offered. And it does not allow new entrance into the system is one consideration as well. Next slide, please. Limited recycling registration permit is another approach. Here in Washington County, this would require a code change and administrative rules to include a registration or a permit for collecting recyclable materials for a fee that are not currently included in the curbside recycling collection program. Some considerations here, this would be a new regulatory approach in county code. This does exist in some other jurisdictions in the region. It would allow registrants to provide services that are not already being provided by the certificate holders. And the county would determine the level of oversight that must be met. This would allow new entrants. Next slide, please. Approach C would be exemption. Under this approach, the county would exempt county, amend county code to exempt the activity of collecting recyclable materials not included in the curbside recycling collection program. Some considerations would allow any business to opportunity to provide services. It would limit the county's ability to set conditions, and it would encourage innovation. Next slide, please. An attempt to help think about these different approaches, staff tried to put them into a matrix to consider ranking them against each other under a certain criteria. Those criteria include protecting the health of the public, limiting risk to the county, creating consistency, advancing equity, aligning with the regional waste plan, and an overview. You can see under this that Option A or Approach A most closely aligns with these criteria, assuming they all have equal weight. I think of this as more of a decision-making framework or a tool that could be used to discuss the options and the possibilities in front of us. There are different pros and cons for each approach. Staff clearly have found that Option C or Approach C would result in least likely ability to reach these outcomes compared to the other options. Next slide, please. So a little bit overview of the garbage and recycling committee's work to date. The committee has done a lengthy and measured review of this topic. They were assigned this topic based on county code in June of 2021. They held a series of five meetings and three subcommittee meetings where they discussed the issue. They did research with the subcommittee. They invited Metro to have conversations and learn more about the regional waste plan. And ultimately, the majority of the committee did not request, did not support or request for an exemption. Some of the key takeaways from the conversations for the committee. Committee members were generally in favor of collecting additional recycled materials. They felt it was a good thing. Recycling is good. We should encourage more recycling. There was some interest in new entrance and innovation amongst the committee members. There was a strong desire amongst all committee members to provide services that are being valued and asked for by community members. Just not sure exactly how to get those services to committee members. There was some concern and confusion, concern about confusion and risk with non-regulated service providers operating in the system. There was understanding that regulation brings transparency and control to the system. And also recognition that franchise fees are an important component that fund the oversight of the system and ensure that the county can manage the system responsibly. Next slide, please. The Washington County Hallers Association, which is our current association of certificated haulers, has also submitted a proposal to county staff. I understand it sent a letter to your board earlier this year as well. They've done a lot of work to kind of provide a proposal to provide a similar service in their service areas. Their proposal has a two-phase approach to it. The first phase, they are proposing the addition of household batteries to standard curbside collection services, a Ziploc bag and a glass bin, and batteries can be collected separately, similar to how we collect motor oil in our system. They're also proposing additional items in a separate covered bin that would be available to all urban unincorporated Washington County residents. This would be an add-on service that would be only taken if the customer decides to take this additional service. Additional items in their proposal include compact fluorescent light bulbs, plastic film, and textiles. The customer would request a pickup at every other week intervals. And then again, it would be separate from curbside service and provided upon request. And the monthly fees are still being worked out by the Hallers Association in a proposal. And they're looking at about $4 to $5 for a participation base fee to pay for overhead and about $9 to $11 per pickup on materials. And then Phase Two, there's an acknowledgement that there's a desire to provide this service to multifamily community members, but there's still a lot more work that needs to be done to develop a successful approach. Next slide, please. This is the last slide. I'm sorry. I'm throwing a lot of information at you all. We've done a lot of community input over the last year working on this topic. We recently did a community survey in the fall, trying to get a pulse of community members about this topic and whether they're interested in a service like this. We have received over 2,100 responses. 96% of respondents were either maybe interested or interested, which was pretty resounding. We felt that was a pretty strong response. Most respondents did report living in a single-family home, which is, I think, an important consideration. And then also, we learned that 85% of respondents expressed that they do not currently subscribe to a service similar to this. And that 75% of those respondents currently take these materials to a drop-off depot. We also had some listening sessions with some community partners. The Promotoras Ambiantalas is a community-based group that we work with, based out of Central Cultural. They're all master recyclers, and they do great work in the community, educating folks. We did a listening session with them. Some of the feedback we got was around who pays? Can producers pay for this service? Can stores help pay for this service if they're putting this material in our community? Some feedback that we should focus more on reducing waste and less on recycling waste. And then also the assumption, and I think it's a fair one based on how the system treats community members today, is that it would not benefit me because I live in an apartment. And I think that's an important piece of feedback that we can interpret from those groups. We also, Ridwell did a form letter campaign that you're all aware of. We received about 1,450 emails in support of Ridwell operating through that campaign as well. So I think that's my last substantive slide. Next slide, Kevin. That's it. So happy to answer questions and help guide discussion at your leisure. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions? Go for it, Commissioner Treese.
So I have a couple of questions, and I think I'm going to start toward the end of your presentation and go forward. So could you go back to the proposal from the haulers that had the costs in it, please? Because I don't know that I understand that proposal.
It's one side back. There you go.
One more. Yeah, there we go. Okay, so can you tell me what? Yeah, the last bullet, separate from regular curbside service and provided upon request, there'd be a base monthly fee of $4 to $5 and a flat fee between $9 and $11 per pickup. Is that correct?
Yes. So the cost ranges are just because the estimate is still an estimate at this point, but that's where they think the pricing would be.
So we're talking, we're talking about, if they're picking up twice a month, we're talking about anywhere from $22 to $27 a month. Is that correct?
Yes, at twice a month. I think the way it's set up is it would only be, they would only be charged the flat fee per pickup. And so the pickups are not required. It's kind of like an on-call garbage service model where in Washington County, pay the fee to participate in the program, and it covers the administrative overhead costs. And every time there is a service that is a charge for that service. So someone could choose to do once a month pickup or twice a month. But yes, I think you're correct if it was chosen to do twice a month.
I'm just trying to get a feel for the cost there. And then if you could go back to the beginning of the presentation, well, not the very beginning, but where you talked about the three approaches, is there maybe one, maybe one further? Okay, is there, when you look at these three approaches, where do you think, Tom, that the approach to allow Ridwell to continue until the hauler is prepared and up to speed to provide a similar service? Where would that fall if that were a concept that we were looking at on this continuum? Is it between A and B? Or is it one of these boxes and I just don't understand?
Well, it depends if that's a limited-term opportunity that the board is interested in pursuing or if that's rethinking about the framework for an ongoing opportunity. So there will likely be other business models that identify different segments of the waste stream that they may want to provide types of services that the system doesn't provide. So if you're thinking about providing an opportunity for any business that has identified an, some way to divert a segment of the waste stream that the current system does not divert, and it's an ongoing opportunity, that would be either B or C, depending on how much oversight the county wants to have. If it's more of just until things come online and it's just for the specific issue, I think it would be closer to A and B and somewhere in between there, if that makes sense.
Okay. And the other piece that I just want to bring forward here is that I appreciate the science behind what you've talked about. I appreciate the percentages of, you know, film and all the different, all the different pieces of the waste stream. But I think that there's another part that we need to consider, and that is what our constituents perceive. And I think it's different than what we see here in the science. Now, does that mean it's incumbent upon us to change that perception and to provide continued education? Or is there a balance here between meeting what their, what their needs are and what they, what they want to feel good about, frankly? And that's, I think we all, you know, there isn't a day that goes by that we don't, we don't hear information about the waste stream, about climate change, about use and reuse. And I think that people are trying to figure out ways how they can participate in solving a much larger global issue. And it feels like we have left that part out of this discussion. So, and I bet that doesn't mean I don't appreciate the scientific piece and, you know, the facts, so to speak. But I do think that there's another piece here that we were not discussing.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Commissioner Treese.
Other commissioners? Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
Yeah, Thomas, thank you very much for this. I guess the first question to me is, was my understand that GRAC had the sole authority to make this decision, and they did. So then are we changing the rules? And is that, I see Tom shaking his head yes. So explain that to me, Tom. How do we, how do we navigate into a new place there?
Would you like me to try or would you like to try to take that?
Either one of you, either one of you.
And Tom Carr can correct me if I'm wrong. So there is a section of Washington County Code 8.04, which oversees and regulates solid waste collection. 8.4, 8.04, 130C is under the exemptions section. And that section of county code says that the board may exempt a person, activity, process from the requirement to obtain a certificate upon a recommendation from the advisory committee that it does not, it's not necessary to the implementation of the regional waste plan. So the GRAC was answering a very specific question, and the GRAC was granted the authority to answer that question in county code as it exists today. So that was the exemption request that was made by Ridwell. And it's a very specific request to that one section of county code. And that's kind of been lost in this conversation a little bit, especially with the community, because it's a very technical, legal process that was laid out in county code. It was not changed. No one changed the code to make Ridwell go away. The board has the authority to change county code. So now the conversation that is closed for that request through that section of county code. But the board ultimately has the authority to change the county code to determine what's the best way to implement the solid waste collections program inside of unincorporated Washington County. Does that answer your question? And did I get that right, Mr. Carr? Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, as long as I guess I understand that not only do we have the authority, but what we have to do to have the authority, it sounds to me like we've got to make some modifications and some changes there, and then we can have the discussion. So, okay. So a couple of things, food recycling, you said was 27%. As you know, the city of Hillsborough, I live in the city of Hillsborough, I have my little food debris bucket. And I rarely ever put food in the garbage anymore because you put them in those little buckets that the city provided. I'd like to see us, I don't, I don't know what that costs the city, and I don't know how that works and everything else. I don't even know if we could, because all of that now goes into my yard debris, which then goes to North Plains. So, and I don't know if they have the capacity to do this. Anyway, I'm just kind of wondering, is 27%? Just kind of startled me a little bit. And if we wanted to just attack the big picture, that would certainly be a direction I think we should be considering. But having said all of that, from my standpoint, it's what's my primary objective that I hope we get to? And that is that we provide recycling for every material that we could recycle, that there's a market for. Now, I guess the question is, who's going to do that? So these are items that sounds to me like, again, we have to redefine this a little bit. And then we talk about electronics and, you know, I think about Um, and then we talk about electronics and, you know, I think about, I heard you say uh lighting, s- strings of lights. I have boxes of Christmas lights up there that I need to, to get rid of, but I don't know what to do with them, so they're setting into my attic. My kids will inherit them. Now, I love that. But um, uh, yeah, that's what they're doing, Catherine. Seriously, my kids are going, don't be leaving me that stuff.
Oh, no. Metro's had special programs for years to collect those. Sorry.
Well, I know, but where do they go? I mean, where do I take them?
You can take them from Far West Recycling, any of those depots, yeah. They're got copper in them. That's really that good value. But if they go in the bin, they wrap up on the equipped machinery and it's pretty bad for the machinery.
That's why I haven't put them in there. So, okay. Um, anyway, uh, I'll try and take care of that. My, I'll give away my kid's inheritance, you know? I mean, it's okay. Um, but bottom line to me is let's find some way to do this. I, I noticed in the presentation, a term that I hadn't, I guess, considered before was subcontracting. So by that you mean a company like Ridwell would subcontract with a hauler? Pick up those items? Is, is that what you're, is that what we're doing there?
Yeah, so the, the current example of subcontracting in our system is in medical waste. So medical waste is a solid waste under our code. Um, so medical waste needs to be collected by a certificate holder or their subcontractors. And the certificate holders have chosen to subcontract their medical waste collection services to Trilogy Medical Waste for the most part in our community. So that is a service provider operating under the authority of the certificate under subcontract with the certificate holder. So that is an option here. It doesn't have to be a, a private company. Some of the haulers, um, for example, have subcontracted with each other to provide Dropbox service. So if there's a smaller company like West Slope Garbage and they don't have the, the customer territory to justify a Dropbox truck and Dropbox containers, they've come together to create Washington County Dropbox and subcontracted that line of business to a third Cardi company. So it's an option, but it puts the, the, it's a decision of the certificate holder to decide what services are subcontracted.
Okay. Well, I guess in overall, I, I just, um, I think everyone who is functioning in this industry needs to be held to the same standard. So they need to be permitted. And um, if we require them to, um, like we do our haulers, annual reports, profitability analysis, all those kinds of things, everybody should be held to the same standard. Um, but overall, again, is I'd like us to find a way to provide this service uh to all of our residents in unincorporated Washington County.
I think, eh, eh, I agree with you, Commissioner Willie. I think that the next and it should be available to people who live in multifamily uh complexes, that type of situation as well. Uh, I think to date it has been only in single-family homes, some of these services anyway. So I, I, I want to make sure that we're, we're looking at that piece as well.
And, and this, this conversation is really uh why this is a challenging topic, because when we talk about regu- regulating the system, we, we talk about how many, how much, what lever of control does the county want to exert over a program like this? The fully regulated approach where we have certificate holders that provide exclusive services in certain areas, they cannot turn down a customer. They have to provide the service to all customers. They provide like customers, like services, and they charge a county-set and approved rate. That can be done by limiting competition in the system through the franchise authority of the county. If we open it up to open market, we lose those levers of control so that we cannot, it would be hard to dictate to registrants or exempt businesses that they have to provide services to certain customers, that they have to do it at a certain cost, because then we're just creating another franchise certificate system in a sense. Um, so that is, that is the, the economy. That's the challenge here. Innovation does not bloom in a regulated system like that, but those services are provided consistently. They're provided under the county's authority and they're provided at the behest of the county in, in, in alignment with our priorities and our vision.
And that in essence is why I asked about, it's our middle ground here. Is there, is there a bridge that can be built? Uh, right now, because I, I don't think we can ignore the amount of uh feedback that we've gotten from uh our residents in Washington County about the, about the Ridwell service.
Yeah. Um, one, you know, I think all of these approaches, approach B and C in terms of a, a registration process or an exemption process, it's easy to say, I mean, I think the code could be written or the rules could be written to say that a service that is not currently provided by the system. So then it becomes under the county's authority to determine what services are essential, which services should be provided where and which services should be provided with what conditions. And then letting go of these other ancillary services that we'll never be able to keep up with, with our regulatory tools anyway. So I think that's, that's kind of the, you, you can do this if it doesn't interfere with the county's priorities and the county's systems through this, this uh solid waste collection authority in a sense.
Commissioner Rogers, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I can comment. I don't know that I have questions. I, I mean, the threshold, threshold issue uh is whether or not you believe in franchises. Some folks don't because they like the free enterprise approach. Uh, others, uh, I'm a free enterprise person too, but I like, I, I do indeed like franchises because I don't want thirty-two thousand trucks. That's an exaggeration, obviously, running up and down various neighborhoods. So uh, the, the trick in this is if somebody becomes innovative, uh, how do you continue to foster that? While at the same time being in the franchise system. And so um, that's the needle you're all are trying to thread. To me, uh, if somebody comes in with a new wonderful idea, I think it's incumbent upon us to go to our franchisees who are regulating and saying, can you meet that? If they can't or unwilling to, then you start looking at maybe additional franchises, I'll call them that, on a, on a more narrow spectrum of, of, of delivery. Um, and so that, that's really to me what, you know, our waste management, our waste group should be doing, is they should be saying, do we re- uh, commit to, we have a franchise system? What does that include? Should we be more expansive? Because who knows? I mean, there might be a market for other things we're not even thinking about. And if that's the case, uh, do our haulers have first right of refusal? What period of time is that is? If they can't match it, as Commissioner Willie was saying, I'd like to see all that. Well, maybe they don't want to provide that. That's not cost-effective. So they can opt out, but we need some mechanism to, to uh provide those services. Should we feel that that's important? So we're trying to do the hydraulics. We're trying to play with them in a very isolated uh uh situation. I, I have not seen the number of calls. Apparently others have seen with regard to Ridwell. Some people use them and I can tell you, tons of people do not. Uh, so I, I, I think uh, from my standpoint, Thomas, what we need to do is get a little input again from the committee, uh, understand from the haulers, are they willing to expand their services? Um, I wouldn't have been opposed to having some temporary uh allowance, if you want to call it that, probably not the best choice of words, for the Ridwell to operate until somebody comes up with it. But I know that's tricky as well. So uh, but I would go to the committee, say what we've got, see if they're suggesting an expansion of our franchises for certain products. And if not, uh, we ought to get input from the haulers and see whether they can match it. So that's where I am.
Thanks, Commissioner Rogers. And uh, the, you know, the Washington County Haulers Association has submitted a proposal to staff um to do this service. So they're, they're attempting to meet that um demand. Um, and I would also know that the chapter eight point zero four does have a section that's called a temporary certificate, kind of exactly what you were highlighting. And it, and it notes that if the certificate holders cannot or will not provide a service, then it may be certificated to another. In this circumstance, the haulers have signaled to us through um their memorandums that they are interested and they can provide this service. So um, this doesn't, that doesn't solve this current, um, this current issue in a sense. But it is, and it is there if, if there was a new service provided that they couldn't or wouldn't uh provide that service to or be inclined to. Sorry.
Could I ask you how, um, how, regionally, how is this being dealt with?
Uh, it's, you know, everybody's navigating the situation pursuant to their own city and county codes. Um, it's a tricky one, topic. Um, we understand the city of Beaverton is looking um at talking to their haulers as well about a potential program inside of their system. Their council asked staff to work with the haulers to see what they could come up with. Um, so it's a work in progress. City Portland did go the route of exempting the service. Uh, so option C percent essentially, where they allowed the service to happen without, if it doesn't happen inside of the system. There's no other decisions made in other jurisdictions. A lot of jurisdictions are watching Washington County to see which way Washington County goes. Um, Clackamas County has sent a, a similar cease uh, den- assist letter to Ridwell because they're currently in violation of their county code as well. So it's playing out throughout the region.
Uh, but I was told recently by the mayor of Tigard, I think, or is it Twalton? I think it was Tigard, that uh they have decided to interpret that the Ridwell white container is a residential Dropbox, just happens to sit on people's porches. Uh, have you been able to verify that or are you aware of that? Or is it just wishful thinking?
I know, uh, I've talked with city of Twalton staff and I think that it might be uh Twalton. And I know they have um communicated with Ridwell that, and from what I understand, their approach is similar to what um Commissioner Rogers brought up, is like, can somebody do this on a temporary basis if the hauler does not want to provide that service? So I think there's kind of this debt standoff right now in terms of if they understand, they haven't got a specific proposal from their hauler, so they're still considering whether that service can be provided outside of their franchise. That's my understanding. And I know city of Tigard is watching uh DEQ and Metro are also involved in permitting the facility, the receiving facility for this uh for Ridwell. So that facility is um in the permitting process with both Metro and DEQ. And I know Tigard is watching to see the outcomes of that process and also um what the county ultimately decides to pursue.
So I have a bunch of questions, but uh if I could start with what I think I just heard you express, uh, DEQ and Metro uh permitting the receiving facility, does that process include verifying that all of the material is in fact recycled?
Does not.
Okay.
We've confirmed that with both agencies. They are just maintaining the health and safety standards of the facility itself to make sure it does not um harm or pollute the surrounding environment.
Okay.
Not, not where they're going and if they're going to responsible markets or any of that.
Okay, okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll go with my questions before we do a whole nother round of, of questions. On slide eight, which is uh approach A, new collection program, amend administrative rules to require certificate holders or their subcontractors. Do you mean existing certificate holders or any certificate holder?
Existing certificate holders.
Okay. So it's essentially those franchise haulers?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's see, we talked about city of Portland. Um, okay, I took care of that question too. Um, um, quick question for you. I, here in our Washington County area, I have not yet lived in an apartment. Uh, but I have been around a lot of apartment complexes. Uh, but there's been a lot of variation. Could you describe for us what kind of solutions are in place at apartment buildings or other multifamily housing setups for a, for the mixed recycling materials and glass?
Yeah, so the apartment communities have a shared service model. So each community will have a shared garbage enclosure area. Um, and inside of those enclosures, there is um mixed recycling, garbage and glass recycling services. Uh, your board just this last spring adopted some new service standards that require um minimum service levels per unit in apartment complexes. And it also ultimately requires that those bins be color-coded to make it more clear and easier for community members to determine which bin is for which um waste stream. So those are the base services. They are available um to community members in multifamily households. There's a, a strong acknowledgement that that's, that sector has been historically underserved, and there's a lot of work happening regionally to, to understand what we need to do to bring those services up and help those um community members um have better access to and be more successful in their recycling.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you. Um, I will say that I've learned a lot from the constituent comments. And I just checked the number of emails that I've gotten in my inbox since they activated the form letters on, I think it was Friday, the seventeenth. I'm up to over nineteen hundred. Not quite two thousand. So it's a lot. Uh, and I won't say that I've read every single one. Uh, but I have tried to look at a lot of them. Uh, there are some folks, as we all know, who live outside of the city of Portland. We do have some portion of Washington County that is actually within the city of Portland boundaries. We also have many different households in urban unincorporated Washington County that have a Portland city address, such as I had when I lived in the Bethany area with a zip code of nine seven two two nine. Because when I moved here in nineteen ninety, our post office was on Xavier or whatever street uh over in northwest Portland. Now we've got the, the um Aluklek uh post office uh building, um, not a full-service post office uh that handles that zip code amongst others. Um, but there are still many constituents that think they live in the city of Portland. And uh, that's been reflected here. And, and then just today, we had a, a member of our community testify, not just a member, but the chair of the ESPD Advisory Committee, say she lives in the city of Beaverton, but she's in ESPD, which puzzled me at first. So I double-checked my ESPD map. And true to my understanding, ESPD area is all UUA and doesn't have any portion of the city of Beaverton. But her mailing address may still be a Beaverton mailing address. Um, but if her property tax doesn't show a Beaverton city tax, then she's not in the city. So anyway, it's complicated, which is also why Tom, Thomas Eggleston, your team, and the haulers across the county have worked with Metro and all the regional uh jurisdictions, all the various cities, the three counties, to provide for some consistency. Because our community members move from place to place, or they go visit friends in place to place and they wonder why certain things are done in different ways and why the bins are of different color and so on and so forth. Wow. It's confusing just to do what you consider the right thing. Enough to make your brains explode like a cartoon character sometimes. So um, the uh, on slide thirteen, the proposal that is not yet complete, but has enough flesh on the bones, I'll say, um, with the haulers association. Um, that is following, am I correct in understanding that is following option A?
Yes.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure about that. Um, because I think one of the key messages that I got out of the various constituent communications is people have an expectation that if it's being collected, it's being recycled. Uh, and so they're not differentiating those activities, uh, which is where uh all of the cooperative effort that's gone on amongst the jurisdictions has been really important to work on, on the expectations. Um, I was also surprised to learn that uh someone that I know called me, no, I called her, um, uh, because with Because with an email that I received, I was a little confused. Because for years, I've been taking my plastic films to the grocery store. And. That the email that I have communicated that until Ridwell came in. She could, had no other means for recycling. And so it illustrated to me that. Despite our years of trying to inform our community members about these different avenues. Some very convenient, maybe not your front porch, but still pretty darn convenient. You know, my eye doctor's been recycling my older eyeglasses and frames for decades, right? So it's, it's just interesting. I do share the concern about. Availability for all of our community members. And ensuring there's some consistency. But I do think that this proposal. From the haulers is a good start. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Rogers that one of the key advantages to the franchise system. Is that we, we have more efficiency for the trucks in our community. I mean, we've all seen over these last two years. I mean, I've, I've had times when there have been multiple. Delivery service vehicles in front of my house all at the same time, sometimes multiples from the same company. Versus the three different main companies that seem to be operating in my area. So it's a lot. But. So those are the questions that I've had. Thus far. I think you were. Trying to, and I should, I should check in again with my colleagues, but I just wanted to make sure first. That I understood that today you were laying out. The regulatory approach slide and. Where things currently stand with the Haulers Association about. Practicing the art of the possible within option A. But nonetheless, A, B, and C remain open to us, correct?
Yes. Yes. Option A is the Haulers Association has sent their proposal that we outlined, and that would be the approach A approach. If your board wishes to pursue that. That would involve administrative rule changes and a rate for that new service. But the Haulers Association is committed to following through on that. And I believe that they. Can move pretty quickly if that's the direction the county wants them to go. And then the other options would require also additional work, code changes and public hearings and ordinance processes. And that is an option that we could pursue if we are interested in moving that way as well.
Okay. So let me turn it back to my colleagues to see if you have any questions or if you would like me to just. Pose a very precise question to you. General questions or. Go ahead, Commissioner Teresa.
Thank you, Chair. Thomas, um. If we, if we went with the Haulers proposal. Would there be a lag in between or that was the question I was kind of asking early on. It's. And, and how long would that lag be? Would they, are, are all of our haulers on lot, on board? With doing this, you know, that's, that's the other question. And, and I have particular interest in this because I think I, it's my, it's my feeling that I have a high percentage. Of the people that have got Ridwell in my district. So I'm getting these questions quite a bit. So that's why I'm, I'm, I'm very interested in making sure we solve this problem.
Yeah, so there would be a gap in service. There is now. Ridwell has stopped providing their services as of January fifteenth is what they've informed us. The. Haulers, if the haulers were to implement a program, I would guess March or April would be. Optimistic in terms of going through the, the rule changing process and establishing that rate. But I think it's doable and they seem very committed to pulling it together as quick as they can. And they're very interested in, in the service.
Do you know if Goodwell has any interest in continuing the service until the haulers are online?
They seem to want a more long-term solution. Or more of a longer term commitment to being able to provide their services than just kind of fill the gap for a couple of months. That's the impression I'm getting from them.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Chair Willie.
This would be a legal question for Tom. What's our lowest risk exposure option? I'm sorry, I should have probably tossed that out to you.
No, 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 the reason I pause is, is Commissioner, I have, I have a reluctance to talk about risk in public. But. The, the, the. From a litigation risk, the liability will increase it to the extent that Ridwell's excluded. But that's, that's not an absolute statement because we could have liability by excluding franchisees as well. So I, I think that like most decisions, you should feel comfortable making this as a, your best policy decision. And we can defend whatever you decide to do.
Okay, good answer. Thank you.
Chair, if you've got a proposal, I'm, I'm ready to hear it.
Sorry, I was having trouble getting my mouse to move for my, for me. So commissioners. I'm just looking for thumbs up to see if we want to direct staff to. Come back to us with the appropriate rulemaking and rate setting. Outlined in approach A, as we've seen illustrated and underway with the Washington County Haulers Association. Or not, thumbs up or not? They, staff still has to bring us all those formalities. But they're asking us for direction and which way we want to go today. And it may be that, you know, there's only four of us here today. If you want to wait. Another couple of weeks so that. Commissioner Fies had the opportunity to be fully briefed on this and we can spend a few minutes on it and you can think about it some more between now and then.
Well, I'd like to, okay, is Roy's, Roy's okay with that? So, but I, again, Pam, I'd. I'd like to hear your either counterproposal or your concern. With what the chair has proposed.
I don't have. I'd like, I'd like to see us be able to fill the gap. That's, and I'm worried about that gap increasing in time. That's, that's my, that's my concern right now. If we have the service available, I'm comfortable with that within the franchise. That's, that's why I was asking the question of whether or not the service. Can be extended for the period. In other words, can we, can we move our deadline out to meet the timeframe? For the haulers to provide the, the, the service themselves. That, that was my question. And Thomas, it didn't sound like you were very hopeful there. Other than that, I'm comfortable with A. I'm just wanting to get the service to the constituents. That's what I want to get.
Well, why don't we just do a, a time certain like we talked about in a previous topic today? Why don't we just give a time certain that. Ridwell can continue to provide these services until June thirty, in which case that gives until June thirty for our haulers to. To get their program in place and then July one, the haulers take it. I mean, that would give some certainty at least to both sides. Is that an option? I mean, if Ridwell decides not to do it, that's their choice.
Thomas? Yeah, I think that's an option. I think it's also important, you know, the. I'm not sure if I'm trying to thread, thread the needle that you are Commissioner Teresa. You know, the options are. Not necessarily mutually exclusive. So there could be an approach to. Allow services that are not provided by the system. But when the system takes those services, then the services go to the system. But that is includes risk as well, because then we don't know what the next frontier is or the next. Thing or the trend that a new provider comes in and provides that service for or tries to fill that gap. And what's, what's that mean? And do we have to have this conversation again when that happens? So. It's, it's a, it's a tricky situation, I think, because once we let something happen that. The system doesn't manage now, we don't, we lose that a little bit of that control. But we could, there could be an attempt to, to thread that very. Small and, and fill that gap as small as we can. I would also say that. You know, changing the code, going through that process takes time as well. So it's not like we could just turn it on tomorrow with changing the rules and regs that the county currently has on the books.
Well, I would defer that question to. Tom Carr and say, you know, can we, can we put brackets around it that says for this situation? Not for future situations. I think that your concern, Thomas, was for future situations. But can't we just say, look, this is, this is given this, this set of circumstances?
Hang on a second. Can we reiterate? Ridwell came into the market. I'll, I'll label it speculatively. Washington County allowed them to operate. For a set period of time as the GRAC did the work to operate according to our code. Because Washington County staff, and that includes legal. Confirmed that in their understanding Ridwell was operating. Not in accordance with our code. So Ridwell has ceased their operations per that notification in our code. What you're asking for is that Ridwell continue to be allowed to operate in this unknown time period. And I'm, I'm labeling it unknown, unknown because I haven't heard a clear answer. From our staff around how much time they need to come before us to put. The rulemaking and rate setting in place. We commissioners have been pulling out dates. If Mr. Carr and Mr. Eggleston, if my summary is incorrect, please correct me. Commissioner Teresa, if you have any questions about that summary, please ask. But certainly to our staff. We would like some reasonable timeframe to, to know what are we talking about here? Because we know we have community members who. Previously experienced this. Ridwell service. And many others have not. Yet are looking forward to such a service. And, and we're trying to figure out when we might be able to provide them with some level of certainty. That's all.
So I, I can think of a couple of ways to do this. Or one way that you could do, we could have the staff adopt an emergency rule. Suspending provisions to allow for, for Ridwell to continue operating until the certificate program is up and running. And we have the. The, the certificate vendors being able to do it. And that, or, or you could just do an ordinance that's similar to what Portland did, which is kind of what Portland did. Portland said. The, that you could do this as long as there's no franchisee who's doing it. Once a franchisee starts doing it, you have to stop. So we could work along those lines. Yeah. So we, we want to do something. My recommendation is, is not to do what we did before, which is just say, rid well, we're not going to enforce until we figure this out. I'd like something either in a rule or in a code that says we're allowing this for some period of time until we can get it under our normal franchise system. And we, we're happy to bring back a proposal to the commission on any of those from our little work group.
And I would say staff could probably get or could get a proposal in front of your board in early April. For the Haulers Association to provide the service with a. Shooting for a May or June effective date. I think they could deliver on that, on that, on the timing question for the system to deliver on it.
But to clarify, if I heard you correctly. Rid, Ridwell has. To the question of. Ridwell filling this gap, I believe. What I heard you say earlier, Thomas, was that Ridwell seems to want a longer term time period. So my concern is, is we could. Define a perfectly clear plan today, such as you've attempted to do, and Ridwell could still say, eh, not interested. We're done. We're taking our, our efforts elsewhere. And, you know, we can't guarantee that folks will continue to have a Ridwell service. Until such time as the current. Certificate holders are in place, correct?
I think it's accurate assumption.
And. In that case, while I agree that that could happen, in that case. I think we operated under the. Trying to, trying to make the best case possible for our residents. That's, that would be my preference.
So I'm sorry, I'm really tired because of recent events. So if you could summarize what you think. You're proposing so it's clear to me, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay. I'm, I am, I am interested in following Tom's B proposal. Tom Carr's proposal B, which was to allow them to operate, allow Ridwell. To operate without a certificate until we have services available for our residents. And the haulers were ready to flip the switch. Am I, am I? Am I? Saying that correctly, Tom?
Yes, that, that's an option.
That's my, that would be my choice.
So, so the thing that, that I'm concerned about is we'd say we drafted an ordinance to do that along the lines of what Portland did. We, by the time we got that in front of you. Mr. Eggleston might have the program up already with the. With, with the haulers. Cause he said that that could be instituted by April. It's hard to imagine we could get an ordinance passed and in effect much earlier than that. I mean, I'm happy to work on both tracks. If you want to do that, and that might incentivize the haulers if they knew that this was floating out there. So. If, if that's what, what the board desires, we could certainly go that way. But I'm conscious of the fact that. That we may have franchisees doing some or all of this work by April.
But what I thought I heard you say. That Commissioner Teresa is referring to is I heard this. I didn't hear an A and a B from Mr. Carr. So pardon me. I thought I heard him say we could pass an emergency ordinance.
I, I said, I said emergency rule.
An emergency rule.
Yeah. Well, the staff could do an emergency rule, just saying that because of the situation, we were going to allow this. And so we documented and we sort of legalized what Ridwell's doing. While we work on the other thing, or we could do an ordinance. That you would pass, would, it couldn't be an emergency ordinance because I don't think this meets the standard in the code for emergency. And that would take the two readings and the thirty day effective date. So we're, we're looking.
So Commissioner Teresa, in your parlance, which of those was A and which of those was B?
You're muted.
At this point, I would support the emergency rule. Okay, that's what I would support. And whether or not that's A or B, now I'm lost, so I apologize for that. But nonetheless, I'm just trying to get to that point where we're representing what the constituents want. We've had overwhelming response. And yet we're sticking with the haulers to make sure that they have the opportunity to provide that service. That's my end goal. And that's, that's. Me, Catherine, I don't know if that means that you didn't understand that previously or not.
No, I don't disagree with you. My challenge with it is. My challenge with it is we have no way of knowing if Ridwell's going to want to continue the service, that's all. There's an underlying assumption there that Ridwell wants to continue until they can't.
And I understand that. If we set the plate or the place setting so that they have the option, we've done what we can. That's, that's my belief. If Ridwell chooses not to support for this period of time, that's fine. We did everything we could. To, to provide the service, to provide the haulers with the option to come in at, on. A schedule that they can meet to provide the service, and, and Ridwell notwithstanding to me.
So I think we've done a pretty good job of coming up with options and variations on themes all verbally, so. Commissioner Therese has made a proposal that we move forward with. Emergency rules that allow Ridwell to operate until such time as the board has had the opportunity. To consider and take action on a proposal from staff to be developed. With rulemaking and rate setting to enable option A from the table.
So, so as I've heard this, the board prefers option A, but wants something in the interim before option A is fully vetted. To allow the continuation of service until it's done. And I may have just repeated exactly what you said, Chair, but I wanted to make sure I understood it.
That's okay.
Yeah, I was going to make a quick comment. I, I'm not there. Pam, it's not because I don't think you've threaded the needle properly. I think you've done a really good job. At four fifteen on a day we've been going, or eighteen on a day we've been going since eight thirty this morning. On a host of issues that we've, we've had more than a packed agenda, it's been really too much, your brain can only absorb so much. I, I'm reluctant to, to, to do something on the fly. Without having a week to talk with the haulers, talk with our committees and say. When are you up and, and, and available? I, I don't know Ridwell, never talked to him, that's not my role to do that, but. Free enterprise is free enterprise. They don't need to listen to us or do anything. So I think it really is important that we, we go back and have staff do some really. Good outreach right now and give some, some advice. I really don't mind breaking our rule of a couple of weeks and say, let's bring it back next Tuesday. For some update. That, that's where I'm at. So if you have three votes, that's wonderful. I'm not voting against you, I'm just not. Accepting that proposal right this second. And, and a quick comment to you, Roy, is I'm completely in the free enterprise as well. But I'm also wanting to keep everybody. Held to the same standard and same rules. And our haulers are held to that standard and those rules. And we cannot allow somebody to just freelance because of whatever, so. I think the proposal that Commissioner Therese has proposed, that Tom has recommended. I would say that complies with that and we're going to evolve at the end of this day. With everybody having the same rules and on the, the same playing field, so that's why I'm supporting it. And my battery's going to die, so just a second.
Tom has his hand up. Okay, Mr. Carr, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to remind you that the, the board will have to approve any rule. So this isn't just going to go into effect without anything else happening. We'll bring something back to you. So with respect to Commissioners Rogers' concern, you will have a few weeks or a week or so to think about this, depending on when we can bring the rule back. So this isn't just going to happen by staff moving forward.
Hence illustrating the point as to why we don't usually have items that come to this board. Without a clear set of options and next steps because we keep repeating the same things over and over and over again. I'm tired. My apologies for stating the obvious. So we have a proposal on the table. And you've all described it correctly. Would we like to move forward? Which involves additional next steps to come back to us for approvals? An emergency rule has to be approved. Subsequent. Administrative rules and rate paying have to be approved. All towards the effort of moving the ball down the hill for our community. Great. And with all of that, please also make sure that Commissioner Phi has the benefit. Of a briefing on this topic and today's direction.
Thank you, everybody. I know this was a hard, long discussion. Thomas, you did a great job of laying out everything and I, it's, this is new territory. I appreciate all of the discussion and I know we're all tired, so thank you.
Okay, we have an exec, thank you, Thomas, and thank you, Mr. Carr and Mira and other staff. Okay, we need to have an executive session today, like it or not. Would folks like to have a bio break or do you just want to push through? Okay, I see a ten-minute bio break. Okay, so we're going to do that. But could we please get a motion so that when we reconvene in executive session, it is pursuant to O R S one nine two point six six zero. Sub two, sub H regarding potential litigation. We have a motion from Commissioner Therese. We have a second from Vice Chair Willie. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries four to zero and we'll see you in ten minutes. At four thirty-three on a different Zoom link for our executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Bye.